Welcome everybody to Town Hall Meeting Number 81, January 16th, 2024. Today, we're joined by Judith, Curtis, Emoto, Julian, Mauro, Tevo, Walter and William. Thanks all for joining. You can see on the screen a little outline of the agenda for today. Starting off with a couple of mentions. After that, continue last week's temperature check. After that, I'd like to discuss a bit more on BGI 24 in Panama and who we can send there. And if there's time after that, there's space for some flash updates from workgroups and potentially open topics, but we'll have to see how the clock feels like when we get there. And a quick reminder on what the ambassador program is and what we're even doing. Basically, we're a community of people that all are quite in line with the Singularity Net mission and vision and want to contribute to its mission. We do this in a whole bunch of different workgroups, self-organizing workgroups. Find an outline on Discord for that. So do join us on the Discord server. There's a Getting Started channel with an outline of all the stuff we do. Then a couple of mentions. Supervisory Council earlier today, but also next week. As a series of workshops on the decentralization blueprint. And these take place at 13 UTC. Also wanted to put a call out for the Deep Funding Focus Group Listening Session this Thursday at 19 UTC. You're right in time for the main topic being the ambassador role, its definition and then experiment on that. We had a temperature check for this previous town hall. And in the meantime, there were not that many comments on the document. So I feel we could simply go ahead for basically the outline there, as I see it now, would be a requirement of 12 hours of participation over the past six months and six hours of contributions. So the distinction here would be that participating is being present in a call and contributions would be tasks that got awarded with AGIX tokens. Yeah, just for a bit of context, I guess it would be good to have that. Basically, right now, there's nine people active with the ambassador role. And this has been established more than a year ago by now. Yeah, this creates an elitist group. We want to get rid of that concept. So basically, we want to broaden up the group. And with these parameters, basically, the group would be about 28 people. So yeah, that would just get way more people involved in decision-making. And some notes from last week's session were to include the human factor. Basically, not 100% trusting the output of the database. If somebody is contributing, but for some reason it's not tracked, they would be able to manually include in the list of long-term contributors. There can be errors in the output, stuff like that. One example here would be for the archive workgroup. They put proposals under one workgroup wallet. So this doesn't track for every single person their involvement. So they wouldn't get involved into, they wouldn't be included in the list of long-term contributors. But clearly, they are. So yeah. And there's been some other edge cases, but yeah, I would propose we simply be a bit lenient there and it would be better to include more people than a smaller amount. So just to reiterate the human factor, like considerations. Yeah, the next slide also mentions a bit more. There's two questions that I want to put forward to the group here and two notes, basically. So on the note side, if there's a decision to be made where the people would be able to either vote or consent to a decision, before that, we would get a list, like a new output checking for the past six months and have that human factor in there. Yeah, I'd like to highlight the experimental nature. If there's some unforeseen reason where we really feel like we shouldn't have done it like this, we can revert back to the current system or make adjustments as needed. Basically, this whole process has been in a stillmate for a long time, too long of a time, I think most would agree. And so just getting this experience and probably breaking stuff as we go, but then learning and improving. Yeah, that would be a good approach.
Yeah, I have an objection, I have questions and I have points. The objection that I have to this, I am all for expanding the group, you know that. I've been at the forefront of trying to figure it out, roles and all this other stuff. The objection I have, Peter, is you have people in another group and we have people in other channels who probably should be ambassadors, but they may not be active in this group. One is the guy that looks like Gandalf and the other people are your Telegram people. And they're very active, just not here. So I object to excluding, especially your Telegram people. I kind of object to having them immediately excluded from this. The second thing aside from the measurement, and this is where the brilliance of the treasury system, the task points that come out of D-work, sometimes are questionable, as you said, for one particular group. So we need to figure a workaround or some other way to achieve those or measure those metrics. And the third one brings up a real big question is if we expand this and we have 28 people, and I think that's roughly the number excluding your Telegram group and Gandalf, where are we making decisions and how are we going to make those decisions? Does this become the official body? And do we need some type of voting system in order to make those decisions? For instance, and I just happened to see you, Tevo, in my screen. We're working on quarterly budgets. We haven't come up with something. In the past, we've done it with a closed group of 11 ambassadors in an ambassador assembly that's been open to other people. And we've made that decision on how to do quarterly budgets. Do we relegate this decision on quarterly budgets just to treasury? Or do these 28 people now, and I think they should, have weigh in and voting on this? Where do we do that? And what type of governance system do we do it with? That would be my question or my statement that I put.
Thank you for that. Well, first of all, on your objection on auto-excluding people like Telegram admins, like the ones you called out that are active on Discord. There, I would refer to the human factor, like they're not in the system. They very easily can be added to that list simply by us manually saying, well, these people are also in the list. So that, yeah, that would kind of be the solution there, if that makes any sense.
Okay, that one would make sense, but it would then take it outside of D-work unless we onboard them into just keeping track of their Telegram time via D-work. And I don't believe they're compensated, but you don't have to get compensation out of that. But we could track their time. The other question is how do we get them here? Maybe they don't want to be here, but should they be invited?
They're all invited, that's for sure. Some can't, some don't want to. But they're all very welcome and yeah, I wouldn't, I would see the output of D-work based on these criteria. I would say that as a list of like people where we have the track record in the system. If we don't have track records, but somebody clearly is part of the people that are long-term contributors, we manually give them, assign them the role, let's say on Discord. Yeah, that feels like the way of going about it. That being said, the group on Telegram admins, for example, there's, let me admit, there's slowly more and more are also becoming part of spin-off teams over time. So the actual group of volunteers, there would be five people-ish. And well, yeah, again, in my mind, this would be solved by the human factor.
Are we talking about just the Telegram admins or the whole Telegram community?
I think in this case, it would be Telegram admins.
I see.
That being said, sorry.
No, I just said, I see. Thank you.
That being said, arguably, if somebody on Telegram is like, I'm there for years. I have a decent estimate, I would say, of whether people are long-term community members at least, even though we don't track contributions on D-work. If one of them would make or want to be involved, like so far, they've ignored the spam we do on Telegram for the ambassador program. So but then again, yeah, if they would want to step up, they're very welcome to do so. Does that somewhat answer? Or feel free to do?
No, that answers it and I think it's good. And I think Walter put a comment in there about application and the human factor in the chat. I think that's a solid point by him. But even, I think the crossbreeding between us and Telegram, I just became aware of a couple of new Telegram channels I didn't have an invite of and I didn't know about. It would be good to have them, someone to come in every once in a while and say, hey, we just created a BGI channel or something you should know about that. As an ambassador, I think that's solid and that would be good. The human factor takes care of it. The second question, the governance, how to handle the voting or decision-making is probably the gorilla in the room and it has been for some time.
Oh, I agree with that. Yeah, my initial thoughts on that would be, well, there's a couple of ways of going about it, right? We've seen in the past that a small amount of people can block a decision which most of the people are in favor of. And if we open up the group to more people, that chance, well, in theory at least, becomes bigger. So I would say looking for consensus with 25 to 30 people, that's probably not going to work. We're going to get stuck and get nothing decided. Alternative there being consent, which is doable, I feel. One would need to present arguments against something if you wouldn't agree with something. And it's not the most concrete right now in my mind, but that feels like the natural thing to tend towards. But yeah, I do get.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I thought you were taking a break.
Well, it's something which I thought about, like not having this figured out exactly, should there be a blocker? Because it has been for the past long time and I get the sense that most of, if not everybody, kind of feels like that's just taking way too long and we should get going. And I'm fully defining the procedures for votes.
I would strongly suggest, I would suggest Rojo has a voting method in, I forget which unit that worked pretty good. We could use Google Forms, which is a voting system. But I liked what came out of Kenrick's conversation today in governance. I know he's working and deep funding is strongly involved with quadratic voting, which is a weighted form of voting. I think we could adopt this and this would be, in my opinion, a pretty good experiment both on reputation and a form of quadratic voting. If you look at Tevo's board or wherever that graph came up from last week of the 20-something contributors and how much time we've put in in the past whatever X amount. And if you use three months or six months, whatever it is, we could do a form of quadratic voting off of each person's experience. So for instance, I've been, Tevo's been here, out of what I see in the room, longer than anybody other than you. Rojo's been here a long time. Sucre's been here a long time. I apologize, I'm going to use your name because I don't recognize it, William Tats. I don't know who that person is. I would say his vote should, and don't take this personal, William or Bill, I think his vote should weigh less than your vote, Peter, or Tevo's, who's been here for a long time and knows the system. So if we could do a quadratic voting system off of the time of experience for the past six months and make it a vote, eh, yea or nay, and make town hall the place where this voting takes place, if there's something that needs to be voted on. That would be a proposal that I would put forward. But I would say initially, in order not to delay this anymore, we do a one-person, one-vote. Use Google Forms or Rojo, if he's got his hand up, so I'm going to shut up and let him talk because he's the mastermind with the system. So.
No pressure there.
No, I was just going to join my voice to yours and say probably we should mess up a little bit with quadratic voting. But I would refrain from using any type of probably, I wouldn't use right now the quadratic part of quadratic voting, if that makes any sense. What I mean by that is probably measuring the votes power by either time or, or let's say, tasks, task points or stuff like that is not very feasible immediately. One of the reasons is, we just said it, I mean, we have some people who have been contributing, they don't even have task points. How do you deal with that? So that's a bit problematic. So I would go with Tommy with doing one-person, one-vote. Though, I think we should add the spin to it, which is part of quadratic voting kind of premise, is to use weights. What I mean by that is perhaps every quarter, we can give each one of the members that have a vote to give them 100 points. Now, this is something Kenrick goes to details, goes through expensive details about it. But maybe giving 100 points to every member and then based on the topic that there is a vote about, they would put in some points depending on how involved they are with that specific topic. So if you think, for example, this quarter's budget is like the most important thing for you, you would put your whole 100 points on that and you will be done, basically. You can't vote for any other thing. It's a spin of quadratic voting, so maybe. And that's more feasible. We can do that with some Excel sheet magic. Yeah.
One thing is too, we want people to be transparent on what they vote. They in Excel sheet is okay. If people want to be anonymous and don't want to share how they voted, but they want to affect the result, then we need to come up with some tool that is asynchronous and yeah, it's not an Excel spreadsheet.
It could be like a form that puts the data into the Excel sheet, but there is no names, but just IDs. And we can give specific permissions for that. The technical part can be figured out, I think, but yeah.
We don't have to figure it out if we say that our opinion is, and then who said it is transparent. Then we can play around with even the motherboard voting, which I introduced last year. Which also Walter mentioned, where it's included in the participation contribution. We can design our own weights to labels and but again, this comes back to this, who has contributed, of course, to D-work.
Yeah, yeah. Like my personal opinion would be like, yeah, I mean, everyone can vote openly. But I also understand that a lot of people, or some people at least, would have some, let's say, reservations about that. They'll go like, yeah, anonymous voting, non-anonymous voting affects behavior and all these kind of things. And I'm aware of that as well, so I don't know.
Maybe it's something that can be decided on a case-by-case basis because it really depends, in a way, to me at least, it sounds like it depends on what's being voted on. For example, a budget proposal, if you don't agree with the budget proposal, it's kind of weird to just say no and not explain why, right? So then by explaining and discussing, you would kind of out yourself in a way?
Yeah, yeah, there is that risk. Yeah, exactly.
And you're coming back to consensus or consent, which we've seen does not always work well. And you know I love consensus.
Yeah, in my mind, 25 people, good luck finding consensus on anything, right?
To be honest, Peter, like even finding consent, good luck with that. Because people usually, when they say no, they have good reasons why they're saying no. And those are good reasons, like it's not like they're just speaking out of their behind or something. Like they have some solid philosophical reasons why they don't agree with something. And you cannot change it. Like what would you do about it?
And you should not necessarily have to explain that. You may choose to, but you shouldn't have to, I believe. So that's why I'm suggesting a vote system and we do it in town hall. You know, if groups have something that affects only the group and not the broader ambassador program as we've been doing for the last year, they can handle it within the group on consensus or consent or whatever other system they want. That's group individuality. But if it's something that affects the whole program, such as expanding the program or the Treasury Guild or spending money to go to Panama or whatever it comes out to, it's a system-wide. I believe it should be on some type of vote system. And immediately, we can do a one-person, one-vote. The weighted voting will take a little bit longer, I think.
Curtis, go for it.
If the, if the design is to have consensus within town halls, may I suggest that we adopt some structured way to process through that, such as like say CDM from Sociocracy, where you actually have to present the proposition. That you're presenting what your statement, your claim is, so that when people disagree, is it disagreeing with the clarity of what I'm saying? Is it disagreeing with the implementation or the design of what I'm saying? It's a more tangible conversation. And when they respond saying, here's how I disagree, they have to form a tangible perspective so that it can be measured, right, against the other claims. Otherwise, it just turns into a long-form talk where at the end, no decision's been made. That's my opinion.
Yeah, fair, fair. Tevo?
Something we may want to consider is using blockchain and what we can do is roll transactions. Like everybody has a wallet, we can send everybody tokens and design, hey, these wallet addresses represent these decisions, send them there. Send your vote, although it's not as transparent, but it is hard for like for immediate time window, for person to kind of calculate out who sent what token where. And that uses blockchain and then, because we need to somehow, I think, use a tool or a system. Because if you are going to do votes, then you want to do it multiple times and we don't want to come back to this, how do we do a vote again? But then again, like one thing which we do in ambassador different, then maybe this is like the best thing that we don't actually have to have to make any votes. This is a place where we discuss and if there is an idea, we help them to refine it until they either give up their idea or it gets passed and gets, starts doing stuff and people. So far, we're not, this is completely different from God List and T-Fund, where people are also proposing ideas. And then we just have like a massive voting and see what is the metric show, what gets passed. Yes, we could implement that, but what we are strong at is right now getting everybody past the red line. And we can still cultivate that because we're somewhat tight-knit team in a sense that yes, we are doing different things, but we have somehow kept this notion in mind that we are not asking so much rewards. And this, the last experiment where we even reduced everybody's reward to fit into the budget, so everybody gets into it. I think that is something unique that we could kind of keep running. And if, yes, if our participation and capacity scales, we all get less rewards. But those rewards are more like external values, what we get, what we all hear intrinsically because we want to help decentralization and singularity net. And we have other values why we're here. So maybe we can, yeah, more step on that and let's think of voting. And more, but when it does come down to like decision-making, then these kinds of what is in front of us, like these people that are brought up with contributions and other recognition methods, like human detection, hey, you're doing great work in Telegram, check you're in the list and having like this suggestion or assessment. So we use these people who we so-called lift up to have a better view on what the direction people want to go, but we don't use it as decision-making, which is more suggestive.
I actually had a couple of points and the first one is actually for Curtis. So from the concept from Sociocracy, that concept has a slight problem, which is the premise of what a group should accept. Should they accept statements that are always true or sometimes true? And if you accept statements that are always true, you end up not accepting anything. If you accept statements that are sometimes true, you end up having two opposing opinions that are sometimes true both. And then you cannot make the point for one rather than the other. And then you end up, again, not making any decisions unless one of them pulls out and says, okay, I accept the other one. That's one of the problems that is often faced. Also, I wanted to ask TiVo, you mentioned about sending transactions. I was actually wondering like, if you had something against a snapshot voting? Because you know, there are some couple of platforms for that, or does that have any issues? Probably it does when it comes to, you know, being anonymous and all, but we'll see. And I forgot the third point, so I'll just concede my turn.
Just wanted to add to what you said, Rojo. You're right. Those are some of the limitations with the CDM process, which can be handled through other mechanisms like a vote and so on and so forth. So at least it creates the artifact that can be discussed and voted on, maybe utilizing a different process. But I will say, what you described, are we not experiencing that now? Right?
Indeed, indeed. You're right. You're right.
Guillermo?
Okay, so maybe I'm out of subject, but my personal take on it, understanding there, that's true and reasons for all different voting methods. All of them have some solid points and some weakness. I support the idea of experimenting and trying. Why not pick five different voting processes and use them all? And figure out which one is the best for us, trying different melodies, you know? Because at the end, if we want to move forward and make decisions, at least we need to try different tools. Not doing and discussing over and over, having a discussion over and over about which should we or as we talked earlier, Pete, I'm all in for experimenting. So but we shouldn't be afraid of complexity of this system. So maybe let's pick six options and use them all and see which one fits better. And later, we can even adapt some of them. They are all at the same time valid, one way or the other.
Tommy, go for it.
Yeah, I'm going to paraphrase Guillermo to an American vulgarism, a shitter get off the pot. We've been working, we've been working on this ambassador thing for five months now and it's time to shitter get off the pot. Initially, in the roles and levels, we had, you had to apply. We do have the frame of people that participated in their hours, but we don't know if they actually want to be an ambassador. And as pointed out in the side chat, if they don't want to be an ambassador, there will be low participation rates. But in bringing a question to a practical reality and shitting or getting off the pot, right now, there's 15, probably 14 participants in the room. The question that's been bugging us and we've been kicking the can down the road and we've had objections on this and objections on that. Right now, the question is, how do we expand the ambassadors to be inclusive and not be a small exclusive group? And I'm on the inside of that exclusive group. I don't like it. Uh, so I'm one of the people at the forefront of trying to figure out how to expand it. Um, so I would like to call in this room a vote. Do we vote yea or nay for what Peter has up on the screen? With the caveat, I would change it to, they must ask, they must write a letter or something expressing interest.
Yeah, that makes me wonder, thanks for that. It's also a discussion in chat ongoing, uh, with Walter and Curtis. And maybe one of you can chime in, uh, so in a way, basically you're saying like, we shouldn't just get the output, this is the list, you are the participants, vote and then have a low turnout. We should get the list and then ask all of them if they want to be included, basically? Is that a correct paraphrase of it, of what's happening in chat?
They should ask, I mean, uh, last time, if you remember, we talked about the human factor and that was like, well, we should have like this, uh, let's say sheets or this, this Excel sheets that are, that have the numbers for each person. But at the end, like it's, it's up to that person to ask for, to be an ambassador. And if they never ask, then there is just no interest, I guess.
Yeah, fair, I, I kind of would, the first thing that comes into mind, there might be people on the list. Um, for example, people that do a whole bunch of translations are very active in that way. Yeah, well, maybe if they don't, if they even aren't aware, they also wouldn't mind. I don't know, I feel like asking, like notifying somebody like technically you're eligible, are you interested? That could be a good thing, but on the participation side of thing, I can also see, um, asking people to step up themselves.
You, you know, we can, we can even make it slightly more interesting and instead of just them asking, uh, maybe having a call with the person. Like, they don't have to show their face, but at least we can hear their voice. Like proof of humanhood or something like, I don't know, like proof of humanity. You see what I mean? Like, it's a slight process, I mean, it's nothing crazy, like a five-minute chat. Hey, how are you? How has it been? Uh, welcome to be in a member, something like that. Just as a DDoS attack prevention kind of thing.
Yeah, fair, just noting there that I can hear Felix in my mind screaming like, that's what this contribution system is for, but, um, yeah, I do also agree. Um, Curtis?
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, Peter. It's, it's about, I mean, along this system, you should be, it should be obvious that that person is, is human or not. Uh, personally, I do disagree, uh, probably won't go into the depth of why, but I do disagree with somebody having to petition or propose, sorry, propose that they be an ambassador uh, if they qualify, just because of my experience of trying to become an ambassador myself and, and it just didn't succeed. But additionally, it's that, do these individuals understand not only their responsibilities and the role that they play as an ambassador, but the obligations that they're held to as well as, uh, the value add, right? Not, it's not just a reward, it's not all about a transactional, hey, you do this, this is how much you get. Is what you're doing is adding value to the ecosystem and can they see that so that they can more readily take on their obligations? And personally, I don't feel that because the ambassador role hasn't been fully defined, uh, to that degree, what are we signing up for? What's the correct process? I know that's what we're discussing here, I'm just saying that it feels like maybe we shouldn't enroll ambassadors unless we can properly define what their obligations are, roles and responsibilities, as well as the value that they add to the ecosystem.
Yeah, Tommy?
Yeah, Curtis, um, in, in response, Cardano's ambassador program is a black box. Uh, you don't know what you're applying for when you apply for it and, and they reject a lot of people. Uh, we're, we're pretty damn open and transparent here to the, to, to, to the end that we don't really have roles and responsibilities other than the first definition, which is up on the screen, uh, participation. But, but the reason and the rationale and the logic behind asking, it's not a petition. It should be a very simple form in onboarding. Um, there, there's a process that's been set up and it's, you have to put your wallet number in and that's how we start tracking hours or D-work tasks. There should be a metric is when you hit this, we'll, and I don't think we should be responsible for notifying them. And, and that comes from my long years in the insurance business where you miss one person telling them their insurance was going to be canceled and it got canceled, you would be sued. Um, so the owner should not be on the project, it should, it should be on the person. And all it should be is a very simple, hey, I have your hours, I did X number of hours and I'm ready to take the responsibilities on of an ambassador and I want to be part of it. Very simple, not a petition and, and not a black box like another organization, that's, that's the rationale.
Thank you, Tommy. Um, and, and I did have one additional, I guess, comment is the, the broken-down structure of the levels, that's relevant to this ambassador role, yeah? The level one through five, or is that something else?
In a way, um, I forget, we're never gonna get sorted with these levels, why not just make the distinction between two levels? contributors, non-contributors? It's a gross simplification, which is, I think, um, it improves a lot because we got completely stuck trying to define how to move up from one level to another and, and what exact responsibilities would be for which level and, and it was just a mess. Um, so in a way, um, like the, the, the current outline in the document of these, these five levels, that's kind of outside this discussion in a way. It's a gross simplification between contributors and non-contributors.
Okay, because the, the only thing I was kind of alluding to is that some of those levels, as they were broken out between the five different levels, are, are stating that you have permissions to do certain things. And I, I'm really hesitant against that, that we should allow everybody to participate. So if you're in a level zero, you're basically saying you can't vote. Well, they should be able to vote, what happens when they get to level three or whatever level unlocks their ability to vote? They have no experience, no practice in participating and in voting in that capacity. And therefore, it's like, it's all thrown on them. Whereas if they can get practice in level zero and maybe the weight of their vote is very minimal, but they're able to pursue the same exact responsibilities and obligations that others are so that they can climb that ladder and it even increases their metrics and participation to, to unlock those additional levels, that's just my thought.
Yeah, fair, thank you. Rojo?
Uh, this is a good point by Curtis and it brings a conversation of, uh, right now, we're trying to do like the most basic, as Peter says, the most basic distinction of like like a zero-one kind of distinction, which is primitive, yes, but it's at least a start. And then from there, I don't know, anything can happen. But for example, when we talk about voting, we do have to make a distinction between a person just passing by for the first time in their whole life and someone who contributed, this very minimal thing, twelve hours, you know, you just stay for two weeks and you probably can contribute that much. And it, it, it does, it does seem fair, so maybe like that level zero somehow would be someone, even though right now we just have like non-contributors and contributors. And, and non-contributor, in my opinion, shouldn't be able to vote. At least give us a proof of, uh, contribution or something like that. But, but I would like to open this conversation, I mean, and to stick with, with this, yes, I agree with this, uh, with this outline. Uh, but also perhaps if that agreement happens, maybe next conversation would be like, or should we exclusively give the, the voting privileges to this group of contributors? Or should it stay for everyone? And if it's open, well, how do we prevent some of the, some, some bad things that can happen there?
Thank you, Walter?
I'd like to offer, having been down this road a number of times, uh, like I was saying, eligibility to vote is typically what civil wars have been fought over. So I propose we tackle that right away. Whereas, you know, accounting and mechanics and so on, we evolve over time, including whether we introduce more levels below the ambassador. There are onboarding reasons to have at least two levels below ambassador, but we can easily evolve that, that's not where the contention is at, so like, you know, let's just do, uh, ambassador eligibility and acceptance process, let's just assume one person, one vote within the ambassador governance body and move on. And Tommy, I would, I would vote yes on what you ask us to vote on. Whatever it is. No, I defer to your wisdom and good intentions, there is, no, no, seriously, I mean, delegating is, is part and parcel of the, you know, how we're on republics.
I mean, I agree, it's, it's gonna be out of scope for this experiment and that's actually something I, I do want to touch on, um. I mean, noting the clock, we're most likely not gonna have time for much more agenda items. Um, but something to discuss would be like the duration of this, like would we be down to do it for the full Q1, let's say, or would we put a number of decisions made as a duration, not really a duration, but practically speaking, it would be. Um, yeah, that's something we also need to define, right? Any thoughts on that?
I do. Go ahead, whoever's talking, I'll wait.
Say number one and that's it.
Um, I suggest that, and thank you, Walter, very much, I appreciate that. Uh, delegation is very important. I, I wrote a paper, I would ask everybody to read, if you can find the link, and I don't know where the hell it is, over Christmas, and it's called Progressive Decentralization. And it has all of you at the heart of it and, and I would love for you to read it and get some of my insights. But I would ask us to table this conversation because we will not vote on it and we will not solve it here. And, uh, we have a, a time-compressed issue that Peter wants to discuss. And he's trying to be gentle about it, but there is an event, uh, called Beneficial, um, in AGI, BGI, whatever it is, it's in Panama. Uh, Peter has managed to wrangle, uh, five seats uh, for us to go work the convention and possibly get some of our expenses covered. Uh, it has been suggested, and I'm paraphrasing and surmising because we've had two or three meetings on this. Some of you did not attend, some of you did. Uh, it was suggested, um, that the top five people in contributions uh, get the spot if they want it, it has been suggested that we ask everybody who wants to go, if they can go and if they're willing to work. Uh, it has been suggested that we vote on it, but we don't have a voting process, there's been a bunch of suggestions. Um, but there's a date on, uh, the event and there's a date on the people that need to, um, book their tickets. And there's other time, very time-sensitive things and we're trying to get this settled. So Peter, I vote, I, I put a motion to table this current ambassador decision. I would suggest you discuss the BGI thing and if there's time left over and we're not interfering, come back to this. Or put it in another session if we take it on strategy or education or something, but let's get this BGI thing out in the open.
Yeah, fair, fair, um, I quite agree, um. At the same time, I do kind of wonder like, um, seems like we're quite in line with each other in a way, not too far removed from actually at least having go ahead on, on, you know, the, the basic go-ahead, uh, on doing this experiment. Um, that makes me want, kind of want to check anybody in the room has strong objections to it and, yeah. Go from there. This will be a cue to speak up, I'm not gonna call out names, uh, one by one for a full consensus check, I could, I guess, um, but the other way around, please do speak up if you think we should not do this at all. Also recognizing that there are plenty of details to be, um, hashed out. Um, okay, then, yeah, like you said, a dedicated session makes sense, um. Last week's tunnel, I did try to push for asynchronous, um, work on this, uh, that didn't quite happen, so I'm a bit reluctant to hope for that again, um. I don't see a slot right away where it would make sense. Gonna update on that async. Um, yeah, well, as you very nicely introduced, um, we need to figure out, uh, who we will have attending on the BGI twenty-four summit. And noting the time, not only, um, as in the time until the event happens, uh, this is five weeks from now, I would say, so there's, there's a short time notice on it and ideally by next week, uh, next week's tunnel, I would like to have a finalized, uh, list of attendance. Couple of suggestions for figuring out, well, who can attend, um. For example, well, I should call that, for example, looking at activity over the past six months and, and have that impact. Uh, another suggestion was simply asking who wants, which I thought was a great idea, um. And, and can also, there's, there might be potential travel restrictions for, for people, so that's a factor there. Um, there was a suggestion to ask, uh, twenty percent, uh, personal coverage of the cost, so like, yeah, you would pay out of pocket twenty percent, that's a bit of a filter to, well, basically to avoid, uh, avoid people just seeing it as a, oh, nice holiday, um. But get a bit of buy-in on that, uh, in that way. And there was a suggestion to, um, optimize on closer distance, which isn't always cheaper, but in a way of, of like reducing costs, um. Yeah, that was also a suggestion. Um, yeah, basically, I wanted to, to figure out during tunnel right now, um, are there more suggestions to this list? Or any strong preference over one or the other, or excluding one of the options as one? Curtis, go for it.
Yeah, I have it, okay.
Go ahead, Imato.
Okay, yeah, I have few questions. Um, so my first question is, um, when, so the event is, you said it's coming up in five weeks?
Yep, that's accurate, it's, uh, twenty-seventh of February.
Okay, so, um, you made mention that, um, there'll be selling percentage of, um, is it sponsorship or, or I didn't get that clearly? Like, if I'm calling from, if I'm speaking from Nigeria now, so what are, what are the possibilities of me being at the event?
Sorry, I didn't get the last bite.
Yeah, I said I'm, I'm speaking from Nigeria, so what are the possibilities of me being at the event?
Um, well, that kind of depends, um.
I'm checking right now, a flight from Nigeria to Panama is a minimum nine hundred dollars. So according to like, if twenty percent of cost to cover from this ticket plane alone, then you would need two hundred dollars-ish.
No, I didn't get that clearly, I didn't hear you clearly.
I'm gonna write it.
Um, so yeah, for, for a bit of context, um. Well, David just put an estimate of flight ticket costs, um, into chat. Uh, which is a broad, broad range, honestly, between nine hundred and twenty-eight hundred.
And, and Imato, I don't think, I don't think that's your biggest issue. Uh, e-even if you had the money, I think your issue, um, Even if you had the money, I think your issue from Nigeria is the visa requirements.
Yeah, so that they would probably need an invitation letter that helps it to be possible once there's an invitation letter.
Right, but Curtis, yeah, we'll we'll talk about that, but Curtis has his hand up for a while.
No worries. I'm not trying to add work here, but just maybe as a simple quick solution, if we had a quick form where people who were interested and wanted to go could fill out the form, quick field of what is the value add? What are you, what would you deliver and bring to this event? And then what would it cost you? So leave it up to them to look at the flights, whether or not they're gonna do twenty percent of the cost, fifty percent of the cost, whatever. What's your your overall cost? We anonymize it, bring it to the table, say, here's the value add and here's that cost. And assess which one, or maybe also the the level of contribution. Who's gonna go? How much budget do we have? And just the suggestion.
Hmm, it's a solid suggestion. Thanks a lot. Um, so a very simple thing we did like yesterday at, okay, two things. So basically up until the event on Monday's nineteen, you to see what have a weekly recurring session dedicated to preparation for this event, because outside of figuring who attends there, we also need to figure out what we're gonna do there. Right? And brainstorm on that. And that's the figuring out part is not so fun part of of who to send, because we're gonna have to disappoint people. But so yesterday, initial thought was to simply, I I put like a summary of that session in Ambassador's general channel. Also inviting anybody that's interested to simply speak up. And let me do a quick check. I think about three people replied so far. Oh, and for convenience sake, it's also split between ASNA general and in the BGI summit section on Discord. There's a BGI general channel. I think we should use that going forward. It just doesn't make sense to split onto two locations. So far, two two people responded to that. So that's if we have five slots to send people, it's gonna be straightforward. We we did ideate a little bit on what could be requested from people, like ideally. Wait, let me just copy the session notes into Zoom chat so all can see.
Yeah, I think Google form is maybe a good approach because I did like some ideas that was brainstormed yesterday. I think one was like interviewing people and I know we can have a mobile phone going around. I although I was thinking maybe that even participants and interviewing participants are dating, not just the attend like the lead speakers there, because I'm not sure how busy they are and what what's their agenda. But yeah, like having like a checklist, well, these things I could do. I don't know, do we have like our own venue to there, like thing or a panel or a hour where we speak? If that's a possibility, then I could also apply to it. Just have a practice of sharing what we do in Singularity and then like have a fireside chat for like forty five minutes or but if it's like already packed.
I I think there's definitely room for that. The first two days is gonna be summit approach. So like a couple of keynotes, a lot of panels. Because there's way too many experts to give them all a keynote. So there will be a lot of panels. And then, so that's for the first two days. And then the second block of two days, that's a unconference. Basically, this allows all the participants to come up with sessions as they see fit. So that, yeah, for sure, we can have a session there. Or multiple, even if we if we wish to do so.
We could also have a workshop perhaps and say, if you would run an ambassador program, how would you design voting system and contribution recognition?
We just push all our, yeah, push it all to the experts, right? I mean, they are AI experts, in all fairness, not by definition, also decentralization experts, but
Maybe they have a lot of good ideas of how to weight it because they are AI experts. They are working with weights.
That's a brilliant suggestion, Tevo. One of the things we also discussed was spending an extra day there, just the ambassadors. So we could, you know, really come by yeah and kind of figure out what we're doing. Besides the possibility of having some breakouts and all the different interviews we're doing, so. But I love the idea of asking the experts, how do we do this?
So something to notice, the the document I shared in chat, it also includes a list of stuff we can do while there. And that document is very much open to comments, direct editing if you wish. Yeah, it's a live document in that sense. So please, any and all ideas, do put them there. I I I quite like a good suggestion of the Google form that might be relatively straightforward. Yeah, then again, if if we get more than five applicants, that's the real issue, right? If we get exactly five, that's all good. Then no worries.
I'm gonna play devil's advocate here. Curtis doesn't want us to ask, and I'm saying this tongue in cheek, Curtis. So be nice. He doesn't want us to ask the ambassadors to apply or request to be an ambassador. Why should we do it here? And again, I'm playing devil's advocate.
Yeah, quick check on the room. Is there any of these these options that just don't make any sense or anybody feeling strongly about? I don't know, from what I gathered, so far at least, quite a lot of people would be in favor of having a Google form and having people apply like that, putting a bit of details, what they would contribute.
Well, wasn't the plan that you're gonna ask in this town hall who wants to go? And then you add that to the people who have already applied and then you kind of have a number?
Kind of. But yeah, fair, fair.
Need, I think people are probably aware of it. And then I would say the people that may have visa issue, visa issues, we give them twenty four hours to check with their government page what's required. If they say, okay, it's not gonna happen in five weeks, then there's nothing I can do. If it's possible in five weeks, then we'll figure out if the foundation can write the invitation letter. If the foundation says we will not write an invitation letter, then there's also nothing, I guess, we can do. I don't think they would say that, but I just.
That makes sense.
I would just ask in this town hall, who wants to go? Let's get the number.
If we have more than five, probably having a waitlist would make sense as well. For example, in my case, I have to apply to a visa. It might not come out on time. And if you have a waitlist of someone like really willing to go, then automatically you can swap, like last two weeks, maybe you can swap people and stuff like that.
The point is, do we have five people? Because if we don't have five people, we don't have to discuss for ten thousand hours.
Very accurate, yes.
So that's why I would check here.
Yeah, fair, fair.
Amount of five people and then wanted amount of five people, we can go ahead with the discussion.
I assumed already ten plus people from this room want to go.
Yeah, but let's let's
Uh, Peter, are you included or?
I would not be one of the five slots. I will be there, but I would not be one of the five slots.
I see.
And also my my costs, well, most of it at least.
He has the green card.
Um, yeah, so as Judith suggested, any takers, anybody interested to go there?
Yeah, let's let's raise a bit of zoom hands then. That's easier to come.
Well, I do want to take note of it. Six, shit. I was hoping it would end at five, but nope. Awesome.
To reduce, if it comes down to one damn seat and it includes twenty plus hours of work to figure out who goes, remove my name, please.
Appreciate it. I don't think it will cost more than twenty hours to figure out. But yeah, also for, I mean, I don't want to fully make it dependent on people attending this specific tunnel, right? So on the um, BGI general channel, maybe I should do a bit of aggressive tagging at everyone.
And just to be mindful, like this, this meeting alone, this one meeting cost fifteen hours. Right? That's what I meant by twenty hours. You know, so that that's all I'm saying. Sorry.
No, good point. Good point. Absolutely. All right. Now I'm not sure if people are having their hands up to speak or to indicate interest. I see them gone. Okay, cool. All right. Yeah, looking on the on the timeliness of things, I think it just makes sense to have another dedicated session and not just the Monday evening one. Would cost more hours. Guillermo, please.
Yeah, so the quick check on on the time too, we have an important meeting on the five minutes for for guild. And no, just to add on it, I think if we we share a form on the Telegram chat that doesn't have so much diversification on on different channels like Discord has, probably there's a lot of missing information. There, you're gonna have a lot of interest.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Probably not with the right attributions. We all agree, you know, contributors, ambassadors. But still, maybe some people that are not attending to this call is probably finally wanna wanna raise their hand. And again, I think any of you will represent pretty well program. Okay, so I'm I'm looking for a lot of pictures. Okay?
Will be and live streams.
And live streams. There you go.
I'm honestly a bit against opening up interest check to Telegram, seeing that if they haven't joined Discord or the ambassador program in that way. I'm not sure if they should be on our expenses. Yeah, that's my initial thought there, to be honest.
Agree, agree on that too.
Yeah, Peter, we we discussed this, we touched base on this a little bit. Not only are we deciding which five people are going, but this is something that we possibly could make a long term initiative for ambassadors. We have a show in Dubai, Switzerland, Austin, Texas, Colorado, or I think it's been moved to Las Vegas. There there's a number of important shows around. There was the safety AI safety conference in Florida, which I attended on my dime. But we're deciding, this is a process. This is a a first time process of whom in the ambassador program gets to go to represent the Singularity Net ambassadors. It's 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 a high responsibility, a high level of maturity. And we're deciding in a way a process for the next event. I think, and and I think it's a bit of a reward for ambassadors, for people that have very, a lot of time invested, should be more rewarded. They also know more about the program. But I gotta shut up because R and D is is up in in two seconds, one minute. So thank you. Thank you for hosting this meeting. Thank you for guys talking about governance and this ambassador thing. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and keep attending these things. Bye.
Thanks a lot for that. And yeah, due to time constraints, we'll wrap up pretty much right now. To be continued, that's for sure, on Discord. And once I pinpointed session both on BGI, most likely gonna be on Thursday or Friday. And same for either strategy, well, the the role discussion. So yeah. Thanks a lot for participating and hope to see you on the next one.